Thank you for coming. We'll try to get directly into the agenda. First item of the night is several utility requests. Utility requests made of us all are outside the city. And by policy of removal, Daniel will review each particular request and give you some of the various points of interest. As we get to each one, so Daniel?
Alright, thanks sir. Good evening gentlemen. Our first request this evening is for a water tap located at 159 West Old Blenko Road, just north of the city. Just off of probably 62 North. The green shaded area here is the city limits. This highlighted area is the parcel. And the applicants are John and Amber Cantley there over here in the corner room if you have any questions with them. This would be a satellite annexation. We do have an annexation petition on file and we have a utility agreement signed though on file. However, this site does not have sewer. And just like we ran into with some of the White's Kennel properties, you may recall several months back, we actually are not able to annex it from some of the statutes regarding satellite annexation due to the fact we cannot provide all services today. That might be something to look at in the future, but there's not sewer in front of this property now. There is water, there's a water line that stretches quite a ways down Old Blenko Road. And they have a bad well. And their request tonight is to be able to tap onto the... Do you have any questions regarding this request? I'll just briefly summarize what our process generally is with these outside utility requests. You have the option to approve the request and not annex the property. Thus they pay double rates for everything. Or you can decide to not do the request and not annex the property. And those are your only two choices really today with this parcel. The third option to annex and provide service is available for our other three requests we have tonight. But this one's a little bit different in that it does not have sewer, much like most parcels on White's Kennel that we talked about in the past. And...
I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Have they finished the construction now? They've done something with that annexation?
They were not aware of the status of that. But that does bring a good point. If you recall, one of their neighbors was here this past summer, because as part of that construction, the D O T actually ruined their septic field and they had to hook onto the sewer, which is in 62. So the sewer is actually on 62, but not on Old Blenko where this parcel's located.
I have a question, Daniel. What is the reason that more suitable future will there be? So what about the sewer? I mean, that's a question.
Well, and that's a question I'll refer to our engineering department. Is Lanning?
Yeah. Mr. Ward, we've performed an estimate. It's not a direct route to get sewer to this location. Would require a short outfall and a cost of around $65,000.
Okay. One question of logistics, you mentioned earlier that we have options of the annexation agreement. Now, I've been asked, do you record those agreements?
Yes, sir. We never record those, sir.
But back to you, Lanning, just a quick question in terms of what is the plan? I mean, would it serve any of the other area or would it be if you were to do that, would it just serve this property?
To extend service for this property would be just for this property. The sewer in Blenko now has reached a point where it would require a much larger outfall to service this section of residential. But just to serve this property, an outfall, a short outfall of 600 feet at a cost of around $65,000.
Last question to you in terms of if we have under the satellite, we have to furnish a full complement of services. All right, that's all clear.
There's no way that they can negotiate that in this term range? They would like to be broadly in without, even without sewer service?
When we discuss that on the purpose of the issue on White's Kennel, maintaining the conclusion that we are not pleased with.
And how much, are there any additional properties open, engineers, property open with this, with $65,000? Literally just one house?
Load it up, you'll call this. You may, you may be able to catch their joining, their neighbor, and to either side. So possibly it looks like about three properties.
But those in addition to expansion of the area, like what Bob did too?
No.
If we took it out, we could expand potential annexation to get serve more people. That big a broad area, that's not the case.
You have large tracks to the west of this and they would be served by other means. So basically, the three or four residential properties that you have adjacent to this are all that can be served from this.
So what about Lakeview Drive runs down there? They've got sewer down Lakeview, right? Before it gets to Old 62.
And so he was developing, and what about the industry that is on Old Blenko Road?
Sewer comes up Blenko Road to the intersection of Old Blenko and it branches to the west and east, just a few hundred feet, to the west and north, just a few hundred feet in the direction.
What about those industries out there? They...
Some are served by outfalls to the south and west.
Right, and then a further interpretation, that Cunningham place out of your presentation.
Daniel, the water is in front of the house, right?
Yes, that's correct. Water line is in front of the house. And they're more or less, it's kind of an emergency need, the water at this point. Their well is bad, we're unable to utilize it.
You want to speak to this?
It is, I mean, yeah, we checked on, we did water samples and they had bacteria in the well. And then we checked on the well prices, they're going to be $4,300. That was to go 300 foot, or 200 foot and $11 to put out for that. Our other neighbor has a well also, I think they drilled it over right around 300 foot. So I mean, it's going to be, well, probably around $4,000, $5,000, $5,000, $6,000, something like that, maybe to drill a well. And we do have the septic tank. It's a good show, we had it checked and checked out okay.
How long have you been there?
We just, we just bought it. I didn't know if we're close on, or making moves from West Virginia down here.
Just hearing when you brought the house with the water check?
It was, it come back fine. I mean, it was, the well was okay and everything. And it was waiting on the bacteria part of it. And I thought for sure it was good to go. The guy said the well was fine. And then we found out it was a bored, built a bored well and it wasn't deep enough. And then we're just getting out of water and all this, not even in a water tank. And we thought for sure that it was fine, the way it was set up, the way they checked.
We'll approve it. What I think with the, so you have the annexation? I think you put it on the form, then like this too.
Yeah, alright.
But we understand where you're coming from.
Yeah.
We can't really put the CLO stamp of approval on this, like...
You're not pulling up. I assume, and you're questioning this?
Yeah, yeah, we put it on the initiative mark.
And they'll come back tomorrow?
Anything else, Dan?
None on this one. I've got three more actually. Alright, our next one's... We actually have two with one property. These are two different parcels, two different locations. One is 2325 Birch Bridge Road, the other is 1231 Pollard Avenue. And as you can see, they're located here and here respectively. And the city limits are down here. These do have both water and sewer. And the applicant is requesting both water and sewers out.
Where are they again?
2325 Birch Bridge up here and 1231 Pollard Avenue here. This is Durham Street extension right here, Birch Bridge Road there. And these would be eligible for satellite annexation if you chose that route. They are, this site here is over a mile outside the city, so they are quite a distance away from existing city limits. These, this utility infrastructure was put in and placed partially with CDBG money. Can you tell what you're saying?
So Daniel, I understand that in terms of outside rights then, that's... CDBG doesn't have any kind of reference on that?
Checking my turn. Still double rates or?
If you don't annex, it's double rates.
Well, that's not forward, you can go down where the road to you could, the river is right there. That's about forward, you can go.
Right. Pretty close. Yes, sir.
Why don't you make sure that what the river is there, Dan?
Sure.
Has that thing right there?
That's right, this blue line right there.
So we getting down there to the river, huh? So you put it on the agenda by Mark.
For annexation? But not, now, and annexation?
Definitely think we can do that?
We can, if you choose to. Choose to. We would have to, we would end up contracting solid waste. And we have to work with police and fire again to get out there, ruin that route.
Let me ask this question. On that map right there, if you do an overlay and tell everybody that's already got water, Angela's sewer, who am I looking at?
We can probably work that out. It'll take a little bit of time, but we can probably do that.
Well, I, you know, it's the kind of thing, we're right back doing the same, asking the same questions that they're asking before. And that is, if you don't take them in now, in the present status of Cunningham case and stuff, are you really cutting off your nose despite your face down the road? Or are you just taking the position that we're just going to basically, you know, as far as future roads and water, we're racking it off? Because once they have, under Cunningham, once they have the service and the payment on a monthly basis, that's their consideration. You've already got, you don't have, you don't really necessarily, don't necessarily have all that to give you. And I just, I just kind of like to know what it is that we're doing as we do it. If we annex, if we choose not to annex?
But if you, what is the term on the annexation, how long period of time? Remember, we could consider annexation or not to do it. Or we could consider the utility extension and record the annexation agreement. And what period of time would be that the city would have where we could request that we're determining that?
That could be up to you. There's a, that's a blank space on the form and it could be up to you or a consultation with the city manager and city attorney as well.
We've been doing it about 21 years and we're moving, moving through this. We've used about a stretch.
That is what we used on the last round we did.
What was that again?
21 years or something.
Five plus 21?
Got it on what, straight 21.
They'd want for bold, like on the line of...
You'd have to get somebody to get on. But if we annex, if we go to that route, then we're putting, we're going to go inside of it.
Well, maybe at some point in time you're going to, but this goes back to what we've been talking about all along. And without seeing who's got service up there already, it's really hard to make that sort of call. But, I mean, you know, we talked about in the north where we, historically, we allowed people to look on before the law changed, thinking that at some point in time we would be able to go out there and have, once it became urban enough in areas and served enough in areas, we could rather go, we can't do it anymore, we can't go out there and annex in both areas. So whether or not these vehicles that we're using are going to give us the tools to do that in the future, I don't know. But, you know, we talked about, before Mr. Harp raised this hour, we talked about, you know, one policy was going north and then in that area, what we call our growth area to the south, looking at a little different. So I'm not sure we really ever made, made decisions here, but this is popping up yet again. And now might be a good time to do that.
What about, is the urgency of these two requests, any kind of underlying urgency here in the water?
Oh, as an applicant, what is your timeline that you'd like to have these? Or are you just...
Just kind of filling out the water to see, see where we do stand on the subject of what we're talking about from this point. Kind of seeing where it is.
Your well's not polluted?
Well, not polluted.
Septic tanks still flowing?
Septic tanks still.
There's no rush on these, thank you.
Is that the whole practice? That's the whole practice.
How about this, how about if, well, the question was made, if the staff puts together existing homes that tie on, then they really do overlay where our existing utility lines are up there. And if you recall, as we went through this about two years ago, you referenced that we had to put in C D U G lines, so whether they be, to give you a little bit of idea of where everything lays up there. Not appropriate.
Home, Pollard Avenue, Mercury's Road, or what about Sharp Road, is that different?
We can take this thing north and try to bend, especially not...
But you take those three off, the first three is on the...
The Sharp Road, Daniel, you can mention that, that's a little different, that's actually a different one. But its sewer is, is not, sewer would have to be pumped. It has to be pumped up, it would be a fairly significant expense there. So if that's okay, why don't we just, and let me help me out here, Lanning and Frank through Bob, which is last time in Nolan. What do you think the timeline to be able to put together a comprehensive view of that area in reference to what, where we already offered the service and the homes? And then also kind of an indication of where the lines are up there?
We did a lot of this work once before, kind of looking at these areas. So we have much of this information together already. Possibly by the next work session.
And also a reference to Bob's first question, kind of see the size of the lines and know where the capacity could grow to with the existing infrastructure, what we may need to go in over size or whatever we need to do. So the next work session is only two weeks away. First week in October, but if we could, if not, we'll go in November for it.
Yes, sir. I'll evaluate that.
Okay. Alright, Daniel, thank you. The second item here is, you all, I'm sure have been aware, look at the media and certainly by email. We have had some issues with graffiti in certain areas of our community. Police have worked on this substantially. I actually think one of the gentlemen at the first public meeting came and spoke on this, on this issue, W N O B in Fairchild. So that being said, Chief, I think you got a presentation and then we opened up the discussion.
Sounds good, thank you. Mayor Council, briefly, this is where we're heading tonight, just a quick conversation about graffiti in general, some graffiti in Burlington. I'd ask David Turner to step in and highlight some pictures we got here for you, so you know what you're looking at. I encourage you to ask any questions. Otherwise, we're going to move fairly expeditiously through this, but I don't want to gloss over something that you truly have an interest in. So please ask any questions and talk about potentially looking at some graffiti and how we manage that and wrap it up and I'll go from there. So, you know, some people would argue that graffiti is relatively a victimless crime. It's an empty building, it's a abandoned wall or whatever in our community, it just gets painted over, what's the big deal? Well, the bullet points below that really highlight what the big deal is that studies all across the country and in other countries have shown that it relates to increased fear in the community, which ultimately has an economic impact on business. It has an impact on property value, the way people perceive the police and request by their services in their community, potentially increases in violence in the community related to gang behaviors, the general cost for removal, those kinds of things. So it really has a pretty broad sweeping impact beyond just saying it's a victimless crime because some kids spray painted it on the wall. Some data, just throw some numbers at you. University of Nevada says $12 billion annually is spent in our country on graffiti. I don't know where we got a Phoenix data from, but in Arizona there were $4 million. L A County, $55 million last year. And then interestingly to me was the Denver Research Project that showed in their communities that only 1.5% of graffiti instances were reported to police. I found that to be shockingly low and probably indicative of some other greater issues with respect to community respect for the police. Our guess is that we're well above a 50% report rate. But when you're talking about an abandoned building that's hit two, three, and four, and five times, you create a circumstance where either, even if we're making a report and arresting a kid in January, when that same building gets tagged up again in May and June, they might not call. So there is some level of under-reporting in our community that we have to deal with. So in a minute, I'll show you some of the slides about our data, but recognize that that is under-reported for sure. What do the gangs get out of it? That's their newspaper, as Lieutenant said, the detective said in our conversations over the last week or two, geared up for this, that that blank wall is a billboard, it's a canvas, and sometimes it's artistic, but in many cases it's a design. The graffiti is designed to convey a message, either to kids in the neighborhood that the gang is there to protect you and it's a recruiting tool for the gang, or it's about sending messages within their own gang what they're up to, or most commonly, they're sending messages to other gangs. And so when we look at a map here in a minute, you're going to see some areas that border us with Graham. And so you've got a gang that's active over there and a gang active here. And that middle ground where they're kind of claiming turf, there's going to be a high repeat incidence of graffiti in that middle ground because they're fighting over that area, they're communicating back and forth as far as who's got control and dominance in that particular part of the community. It does relate to intimidation and fear, which really equates to the gang's control. Do they have control of that neighborhood or not? Can they instill fear in the people that are there? Or do the citizens have the freedom to go walk their dogs at night and go to the park and throw a frisbee or whatever they're going to do?
Chief, what does that mean when you say they control that neighborhood or groups?
Well, literally that in some respects, when you, when you get into really truly urban environments where you start to see the urban decay, the gang controls the neighborhood and people don't go out after dark. And the prices of homes drop because nobody wants to come and buy a home in a neighborhood that's riddled with graffiti where people are afraid to go out after dark. And so the gang controls that neighborhood. The minute the sun sets until the sun comes up, they walk with impunity. They, you know, break windows, they assault people, they steal cars, they shoot other gang members, and they own that neighborhood. And unless you have a terrific occupying force of police, you're really climbing a uphill battle to get back into that neighborhood, reestablish control. So we're really talking about, we don't have that issue yet in Bloom, but there is, are, you know, places in North Carolina that you can look and places around the country that you can look where gangs rule the streets. Yeah, wherever that is, you call the place, but there are places around that look like that and the behaviors act like that. In my profession, we talk about broken windows. And there are symbols of decay and a broken window is one of those. So you take up two cars that are identical, you put them on the same street, you break the window out of one and you watch. In four days, the car with the broken window will be stripped, the other car will not. The broken window that goes unrepared is a symbol to the criminal element. If nobody cares about this car, then you can come steal stuff from it. So we have the same message going out in our communities. It's code enforcement issue, we don't cut your lawn and you don't repair the broken window and the porch is falling off. And now there's graffiti tags everywhere. What's the message? The message is the people living in this community don't care and the gang elements can come in and other criminals come in and do whatever they want. And so it's about the declaration of we care and what goes on in the community matters. And so it's a slippery slope. And our position as the police is, we want to stop that with as close to zero tolerance as we possibly can and manage and protect the quality of life for every citizen that lives in every neighborhood in Burlington. That's the goal. So two different kinds of graffiti that we'll see, taggers, they've got their nickname, their sign, their symbol, whatever, they paint it. And if, if we're a group of little taggers, we're going to talk about, you know, how close can I tag to City Hall? Can I get up on a water tower? Can I do a bridge? And we'll have a little contest to see where my name can get up in lights, basically. But there's not necessarily a message sending beyond the competitive value of where my tag resides. Compared to gangs will look at a number of crossouts where if I put my gang symbol up and then you're trying to move into my turf, you're going to cross out my gang symbol and put your gang symbol on top of that. Or we're going to have messages, in California, the penal code for murder is 187. So I'm going to cross out your gang code and put 187 by it, which means I'm going to come kill somebody in your gang. So those kinds of message sendings happen with gang graffiti that's a little different from tagger graffiti. We have experienced both. Most recently, we've had a significant uptick in true gang graffiti here in Burlington. So here's a map that reflects the darker areas or the higher instances of graffiti. So we've got the tracks and web and whatnot that's cut through down this area. And so moving over towards Graham over on this part of the map. And that's where we've seen some of this territory battle over the last couple of months. And so the greater frequency is really related to that battling back and forth between clashing groups.
That, Chief, the one at the very top, top center?
Here?
No, top, a little to the left. Oh, that one, yeah.
Go ahead.
Where's that?
It's your house, Steve.
I know, that's what I thought about. That's been tagged, nothing I'd ever done.
Actually, that is a single painting there, you just looked at it very good job.
I didn't realize that. I mean, I knew we had some tagging there on the old pass.
That's, that's where it's coming from. That was back in January, they hit the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
The control panel, they hit it with S M R graffiti and L B S graffiti. And they also spray painted the roadway. You couldn't really see it, it was right there at the overpass.
Right.
It was on the roadway coming into town.
And now Park Road, Railroad track, they had...
At the same time, it was all same time.
That's why I brought you up. Any other questions on this particular map? Here in, in our county, in our circumstance, within the criminal justice system, there's some things that are, I find unique that I didn't know, so I thought I'd throw them up for you, that juvenile offenders are in process in the judicial system and given a level based on prior crimes and based on the severity of this crime. And so a level one offender who's an intake person or somebody with only a few priors can only be fined a maximum of $500. So if you look down here, we've got up to about a $20,000 bill for the current series of graffiti crimes. And we've got four offenders, three of whom are juveniles. So the most we get out of those three kids for these victims is 1,500 bucks. The most we can get. The, it's really a little, it doesn't speak to being a victim, that you'll get restitution in any way because there's this cap placed by the judicial system. The owners can go get a civil judgment, but do the parents even have enough money to pay the judgment if you get it? And then the work has to be done by a particular property owner, the judicial system backs out and says, you need to use now the civil process to try to recoup your money for retaining your building or your wall or your car or whatever the stag or graffiti. So that's a little unusual circumstance that really plays into how we create a sense of justice in our community when these things happen.
Chef, can a young person be required by the court system to go in and actually do the work themselves?
They, I suppose they can. Judges have pretty good power, but then the question becomes, at what point and after what duration does that occur? So from best practices in policing model, we want that graffiti, because it's sending a message, we want that graffiti covered up instantly, as quickly as we can. If we're going to pay it within 24 hours, a homeowner, maybe 72 hours or a week, to find a mechanism to compel or encourage the covering up of that graffiti. And so if we're going to wait for the justice system to act, it's going to be up for months before we're able to do that. So while that's possible, it's not really a good model for us to use to have the kids go back and clean it up. Okay? So, so this particular graph shows 2010 cases through 2013. The black bars here are the, this bar is the January couple of cases that David was speaking about. And then here in June, July, and August, there is a terrific uptick, as you can see. about, and then here in June, July, and August, there's a terrific uptick, as you can see, in the number of cases. We're looking at some thirty or so cases over a two-and-a-half or three-month period. The primary offender who's responsible for a part of this was on house arrest during part of this time, and using cronies to go out and paint on his behalf, but we're still seeing the number of crimes because that's the way gang members are. I'll, you know, do what you need me to do while you're, you know, locked up at home.
I was wondering where the people paint like that from. Take the next one. It acts a way to help.
So when you look across the months of the calendar, there's a pretty good spread. We were thinking initially that we would see a terrifically higher incidence of graffiti during the summer months, because the kids are out of school, and the data really doesn't bear that out. It happens all year long, it does happen in cycles, and this particular cycle is based on these two gangs that are warring for territory essentially. We've been very lucky that their wars so far have been paint wars and not fire alarm wars, but that's the escalation that you see in more urbanized areas is, is the clash of words then becomes a clash of weapons, and you end up with unfortunately some murder investigations, and we definitely don't want to get to that point. So questions on the data piece? Okay. Here's some pictures, a wellhouse near one of the high schools tagged up, and jump at any time if you want to. This was January case graffiti, right?
Yes, sir, that one and one previous was January, same group of folks.
You've got the three-three-six identifying the area, L B D S is?
Little Bandidos.
Okay, and then the thirteen is?
That just shows reference to Ser thirteen, the traditional gang that they follow, and there's a subset.
Is this what it is?
Yes, yes, sir.
That one is, yes. Again, same thing, claiming the territory, this is a similar building, just different period of time.
I'm just curious, is that somebody who's actually signed during the?
They do, they do. Yes, they're right. We actually, the guys that we arrested would not give us who that was, that was one suspect that we're not able to identify. The, but that's his signature, absolutely.
Do they normally have a signature attached to it on them?
Go ahead. Not typically on them though, but in the cases, we've been going and doing interviews in the school system, what we're finding out, a lot of times, we'll go and they'll bring, if they bring their books, their, you know, whatever, their track reviewers, or their book bags, they'll get covered with it, and that's where we find a lot of it. And this recent case we're working out, I mean, you can just about put it up next to the picture, and then it's like that.
So now where is he?
This is eight thirty-three Railroad Street, which is right directly in front of, on the west side, right at the Pioneer Plant. The, we chose this, Chief has been putting up some photos, we're repeating areas where you get hit. It wasn't until this investigation, we actually determined, this one particular area on Queen Ancestry is considered a dividing line between these two gangs, which is why they're targeting these buildings more for him.
This is the same area that the gentleman was speaking about, that the Fairchild community center, neighborhood meeting, this is what he was talking about.
So when that went up and you found that, that was reported, how long before that was freed on?
That particular case, we made the report, made the charges, talked to the victim, I would say, actually, he was very hesitant and removed it because of the fact that safety may be, or it's going to get painted again. And I tried to continue to put money into it, and I encouraged him, I said, if you'll do it, I'll be willing to bring out some technology that we have, and try to catch the folks, if they come back, they didn't hit it from us. And to the point, we had to move that technology to other places to address some break-ins we were dealing with, and.
Is he the property owner there? I should.
Say that again?
That was he the property owner, which was not getting painted right there.
But that's where the argument with paint, or here too, in that general area was about, the gentleman, or maybe it was a letter to that, or whatever.
That's where he took the, you'll see in the next couple of slides, he was reluctant, but he did paint it, and you'll see the difference. This was in Graham, this is on New Set as well. This, just kind of get rid of Blood, it's idolized the number five, which is why the Blood X five is there. DB is a signature, it's Dog Boy, you can actually see a portion of it that's written over here, it's a nickname for the juvenile that was doing this. Bancaca is a derogatory term to the Bandidos. F O A, this particular set is family over anything. It's a blood set that was organized February of this year with adult, with two adult offenders, and their sense that brought juveniles into the gang, who is typically ones that are doing the graffiti. This is right over behind the community center in Graham, and it's actually a street. We're working on Graham right now, trying to get it reported. This, this is building right here, Builder's Discount Center, this is the warehouse directly in front of it, took us forever to figure it out, and, because we got this, picked off a certain one we did on the phone, and B and DB, they're additionally, the whole right side of that building is covered, and when the chief slides through, you'll see some photos on the other side of it, so this, this is a substantial amount of damage on this building. Also, this, right below the door right there, N H M, that's Neighborhood Mafia, that's another clique that F O A is showing an alliance with. Basically, when I was talking to this, this was an adult offender, they explained this to me, basically, while they're doing this graffiti there, it's been an ongoing problem. They actually started in the middle school last year, and you'll kind of see back on the slide that Chief showed earlier, where it spiked in June, and then it went down in July, and it spiked again in August. Whatever, because you have some folks on house arrest, that came off of house arrest, and it spiked initially when the school let out, and they were basically beefing back and forth, and trying to let each gang know where deeper. If you can see right up here at the top, G B O R O is Fort Greensboro, and they're letting know that we've got more members that'll come here in alliance if we, if it comes down to a fight. And doing this, we actually, on eight thirty-three Railroad Street, we identified a juvenile suspect, and once we worked with the principal of Cummins High School to help us identify him, and I was starting on surveillance on him, actually had to cut my surveillance short because I actually, our patrol ended up dealing with the B D S clique that's doing all the other graffiti, and in that conversation I had with him, he admitted to lying in way, his group physically lying in way, trying to catch this other group doing painting to handle business. I mean, we were very, very close to having a serious assault, and it would have occurred. I would have notified the principal, let us know where a couple of the kids go, so we were lucky, we were very fortunate with that information after this one did.
Seems like that there's more subgroups coming up with, you have to look around.
Last five, six, seven years ago, there were four subgroups coming in, and you're having to make your gang.
Absolutely right. The reason they're doing that is because you've got a West Coast and East Coast blood set. The West Coast Bloods is where it started, back in the seventies, and as it came over the U B N, which is known as the East Coast Bloods, started in Rockers Island, Penitentiary in nineteen ninety-three. And since that time, you've had a lot of subsets come forward under them, and they pay taxes to, back to the prison system up in New York, we're sending the money back to the gang members initially starting gang. Problem is now, we're starting to see where they're drawing, basically drawing a line about somewhere between Virginia and North Carolina, they're trying to form a southern version of the United Blood Nation, which is going to cause us tons of problems, because that's going to cut off the cash flow and the drug flow to New York.
I just remember that a couple of years ago, when Sheriff first started, and I guess he does in the back, the MS thirteen was one of the large gangs, and it's a thing that I guess gives a lot of these subgroups, I'm not just saying.
Right, MS thirteen, everybody knew, thirteen kind of comes back from the Latino gangs, comes back to the Mexican mafia, I imagine, thirteen, that's them showing respect to the larger parent gang, and actually, they, you have to, basically, you have to get green lines, so to speak, to start a clique. And they, of course, Ser thirteen has, the B D S thirteen has, the, what we're typically seeing though, with Blood, that was, you'll have the neighborhood group get together, and they'll start their own group, and what happens is they're flip-flopping back and forth, and that's causing a nightmare intelligence-wise, really trying to track and keep up with who's in what clique. And I was typically, like, just for instance, when we're doing graffiti cases like this, we'll know nicknames. A lot of times, they'll usually assign with their nickname, thinking that we will know it, or may not know it. And you're right, we've been seeing a huge increase in a lot of the subsets.
Okay, a couple more, just to recap real quick, so we had gang members doing surveillance on other gang members while we're doing surveillance on gang members, and they're paying taxes to hire gangs. Pretty complex structure, yeah.
I was just curious about the dots, because I thought it was like gang.
Maybe those are covered, is the three dots, it's got a secondary meaning?
Trace Putos, it's My Crazy Life, and the gangs, the gang culture is three places you're going into, it's the hospital, jail, or death, and that's what they do. But that's kind of, I don't really, we don't use that necessarily, if you see that, that's kind of, tell that sign that person's a gang, we're surrounding them, so we don't, you've got to ask just about pieces of the puzzle, we require a whole lot of that, but you typically see that with gang graffiti. This might.
I've seen this on graffiti in, around Saint March Church, in nice neighborhoods, on sidewalks, on the streets, you know, so, I mean, those areas aren't right there.
No, typically what we've seen in some of those cases, not all of them, but a lot of times, the stimulation, they'll see this on TV, and they think it's cool, they'll go out and do it. Doesn't necessarily mean you've got a gang problem in there, but a lot of times, gang members, when they're going to do this, and they want to go do what we call a bombing run, but they're going to have to build a lot of buildings, they're going to go somewhere they can be safe, where their work's going to be safe, and so it creates that, you know, that temptation, fear that they're going to do. And we have, I mean, we've had some ramifications, nowhere in the city is isolated. We, Glen Raven, West Burlington, I mean, Eastbrook is several different places, typical where the folks want to gather, because that gets their gang out.
And sometimes when we hear those people emulating, well, here in the industry, they're wannabes, and you should always tag that up with they're gonna-be's, and then they are, and then we reap the repercussions of that because we let it get to that point. So it's all a big picture, there's a lot of things in motion. Couple more.
This is the, going to be the left side of that building, that's photo that you were looking at, again, that's showing, you know, Blood, and again, the gold Greensboro, the Dog Boy, throw it up is referring to the B that they'll do, they obviously, for B for Blood, and they'll throw it up. A lot of gangs that, you know, crocking, gangs that they're beefing with, they'll take it, hold it down, and show disrespect, that's what, that's what they're referring to, is throwing it up. Again, Neighborhood Mafia, that was a local set we were dealing with a lot, back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, I didn't know if we were having anybody involved with Neighborhood Mafia, but apparently we did. They are trying to break it back.
I think this is the picture we'll see again, right?
You will see that again, it could, you know, there is a nickname, which we're still trying to figure out, we've got to call, a couple more people that we might get over the shoulder with this.
What if, do, are these guys at our house meetings or anything?
Absolutely.
Are they in large groups, small groups?
Typically small groups. We actually had a gang area was last, you know, it's been two fall, not last fall, it's fall of four. He actually got shot leaving an apartment complex, having a meeting, they were having to sit down in a group, he actually got shot at, and he was going down the road by another rival Blood set. And, but they do have meetings, they're very organized, actually. This is eight thirty-three Queen Ancestry, you can see where he had painted over, this guy hit, this has been the past few months. The cross tagging, just like Chief said earlier, it's basically calling them out. Typically, when a gang gets crossed out, I guess basically, you know, we'll kill you, beat you, you know, whatever, that's the message they're trying to send. The, as you can see, the B D S thirteen right there is crossed out with the red, the Ser is then crossed out with the black, DB, again, that was Dog Boy that did that, and the B D S on the other side.
So you've got F O A to start probably, and then Golden crosses out, says no for Tracy, and then DB crosses that out again and says no, it's mine. That's the back and forth, the back and forth that you see going on.
This, this part of, this is actually missing about two other members of this B D S clique that we're dealing with, and obviously, we're going to face that, because a couple more juvenile, but these guys right here are just, I mean, they're living, they're living it, and they're living hard. They're going to be banned, they want to be involved with the gang, they're out, they're proud of the gang, obviously, this photo was taken after they were detaining the officers, and they got, talking about their gang, their gang knowledge and all, and they were more than happy to post with the camera. And they want to do it, we'll take it, because they just went in their validation box.
How old are they?
Fifteen, everyone of them fifteen. Three of them, right now, are in detention, in their era. One from this case, and two from other cases. They're doing, they're doing robberies, they're doing break-ins, and that's why they're in there. They actually, the primary reason they're in there is for intimidation states with us. A victim that actually prosecuted them, they went back and hunted this victim back, and I saw a woman rob him.
Fifteen years old.
Absolutely. And just unreal, I'm trying to tell all of these guys, you can't resist them, they know what they want to do, and they're dead set on, you can't try to deny them. I put this slide in there, this kid is also in detention. The, this is the, we talked to them, the White House was out of Pizza, and Old Church Street, saw my text actually for sale, and he just got out of school, and when he was wearing that at school, what he was doing, that was on the inside of the belt, so he would tuck it through on his belt loop, and you couldn't see it at school. And, but a minute something broke out, or when he left school, he pulls it out and lets it fly. Show the B D S thirteen, show the gang. Just.
So I guess they still work colors and stuff like they normally do.
They're not displaying like they once were. And since Rule Twenty-Five come into play, you know, we, some schools have been really diligent, you know, staying on top, or some, some schools not so much, but we're trying to work with them on that. The, typically, you know, they say if it's definitely gang attire, then they either got to take it off, they got to leave, or places. This is Special T Hundred eleven oh two, North Anthony Street, this is another repeated repeat place that we get hit a lot, primarily, this is because right here, my bike's against one of the Pioneer Plants. So, you know, they feel comfortable right there, because when at nighttime, it's really dark, and you can't see, and if an officer was to go by, unless he physically turns and shines his light, he's not even going to see anybody there. And V I has recently put up a light on this side of the building, and it illuminates the area pretty well. The, this guy hit, and it's kind of what the chief is, you know, trying to explain to you, is this was allowed to stay up a week, a couple days, and then a few days to a couple weeks, and you'll see some progression, it kept getting hit over and over, we were out there three or four times, taking reports. And the same thing, this is right down the street from eight thirty-three, and it's still kind of on the dividing line, so it's getting hit a lot of the time.
You had a photo, Graham, with five kids, five, age fifteen, all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Parents?
Absolutely, talked to some of the parents, matter of fact, I talked to the guy that's on the left side of that photo, is actually running that clique, they, his, what he refers to as his big homie, is, I can tell you his name, because he's been a devil since he's done this, was Guadalupe Roberto Sosa Jimenez, and he is currently in prison right now for the charges that he had prior to that. He's the one that we charged too, right at three years ago when they hit Fairchild Park, Robert, he was the one, same clique, that did this. So they're showing homage to him, they're still going out and painting B D S in his name. The L B D, L B D S that you saw in January, that was his, a different set, but that same individual's cousin, and it was basically two different sets under him. And, I mean, they're showing, they, I mean, they just, they emulate this guy because he's doing time, and he's living the lifestyle that they want to live, they think that is just, they think it's cool, and I mean, we can't explain that to them. I talked to his mom, one guy that was on the left, I just talked to her recently, this past Thursday, and she, I mean, she couldn't tell you, she can't do nothing with it. They're huffing paint, they go out and huff paint, and then they'll go spray, paint these buildings, and then on top of that, you know, they're doing robberies, intimidation states with us, and I mean, to them, this is, maybe, this is where it leads up to, it's a step This was, this was that same building that we showed you earlier, that was on Hanover Road, this is a group of the F O A members, and they're posing, and you can see with his right hand, this kid on the left, that's what he's doing, he's actually holding the B of, he's putting it over his eye, and he's holding, the gentleman in the middle, you see his right hand, he's holding it like this, that's showing C for crips, he's holding it down to show disrespect.
We use, and I wrote, I think, if I'm looking at the right place, only got that one large housing built.
Now, this, when you go, if you're at Graham, Oakdale, see that?
Perfect, perfect.
This is right there on the line, it's right directly in front of Builder's Discount, I think that happened. This, and this particular one, this is one of the adult suspects, he's, obviously, he's painting the N H M that you saw earlier. And you can see based on this photo versus when you saw previously, they're revisiting the sites. As long as that graffiti is allowed to be there, they're going back and painting, see, a lot of stores won't even, they can't even sell paint to juveniles, so they're having a stip. And also, if you paint over this stuff, and you're removing it quick, you're forcing it really to go break another crime, because they got to get more back, because they don't have the money to buy it.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
No, this is his buddy taking the picture in broad daylight, him doing it, and we're getting investigatively access to that phone, downloading it, and then obtaining that as evidence to use against him in court.
That's on Facebook, isn't it? Don't you know?
Yeah, probably.
Nice.
They're not bright, but he certainly has. So any questions so far, I mean, hopefully we've adequately painted the picture?
If we go back to the map. Right, right.
Yeah, it's a deli.
Could you actually fill in the blanks there with which gang actually belongs around the circles or some of the gray areas?
I apologize, that was just a stupid, stupid method. The, uh... This area right here, I'm in the way, I should. Near the ballpark area.
Is that Fairchild, you're talking about Fairchild?
Absolutely. Pretty much east toward Graham and North Church Street, Highway seventy. It's probably what it's going to be, which refers to as a BDS area. Matter of fact, BDS refers to Fairchild as abandoned park. That's the one of the other reasons it's hit frequently with BDS repeatedly. Uh, pretty much from Queen Anne back, FO, the FOA clique is referring to theirs. And going back, back going west, or going back toward east web area. The, uh, and then north up through sixty-two, back, like the neighborhood mafia. Uh, KP, which was referred to as Crazy People, two G, which is second generation, which was basically the younger brothers of the two G. Two G was primarily on North Main, back to, uh, uh, Morgantown. And, uh, back in about two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we saw, now we're starting to see some of the younger brothers and the cousins kind of forming those gangs back up.
What would be a number you could attach to the individual gang members in Burlington slash Outland County?
That's difficult. I would say if I had to shoot off the top of my head, we've got approximately between the trust and sheriff's office, around five hundred, five day to gang members. I would say we're not that big now. I would say we're a little shy of that, but I still say we're two, two fifty, three fifteen.
Are we making progress in this?
As far as graffiti, or are keeping them out of the gang?
Keep them out.
I think we're making some progress with some new laws that we're getting, uh, it's, it's covered. And especially within the, uh, uh, the lean, the retainer, cause they really don't trust us when we come out and we're talking to them. And it's a, whether they're superior deportation, although we've had, you know, I'd say we're probably steady. I would say that we lost to the ground, I would say we gained a lot. And, uh, it's just, you got, you just start talking about having to do intervention in the school system, the school system aren't attached with a lot as it is. And, uh, we're trying to go deal with this, or as much as we can, try to identify whether the problem areas, or what we'll do. Typically, we'll go to parents' house, speak to the parents, love the day, a lot of our parents don't know this, but, and that usually though, it's handled right.
What do you need from elected officials and helping do your job in a, in a better way?
Well, I was in the data, get a little, it's, it's, uh, I would say right now, one thing that I think would be beneficial is GRAPE program. Gang resistant education training, kind of like the DARE program. And, uh, that really, I don't know what the costs would be behind that, but that would be getting, getting great structures in the school system early.
I don't want to get into a vague lie about it, it'd be interesting to see that type of program versus the DARE program, which is the most important of the two. If you couldn't do both, dude, cause DARE's been around as long as forever. And you wonder what the results are in North Carolina, how much does it do versus something like this?
I think the upfront cost of GRAPE program, just thought about another, I think, is initially sending folks to the school to get them certified. And then after that, it's pretty much the cost of supplies to hand out in the school system. And, um, where the cost would be, I should go ahead and find that out.
It's less costly than DARE training. DARE is much more industrialized and copyright driven. There are a lot of issues related to it, whereas the GRAPE program, um, is really about teaching the kids choices, decision making choices. And it's more broadly applicable to, uh, all issues the kids will face as opposed to the DARE curriculum that's a little narrower.
And obviously, these guys are being recruited, if you're going to school in elementary level, so, absolutely. We're, we're seeing a lot of interconnection. Absolutely. And, uh, and that's you. I'd say we're, uh, we're just a step more out there, that's why the earlier we can get to this, it's the better.
Anything else on the map?
What's a significant, uh, the darker shade versus the lighter?
The, you can barely see up there, but, uh, that's the, the higher incidences are darker. So it's a frequency chart that shows the darkest is the highest, the middle shade is the average frequency, and then the, the white areas are low. So you might have a hit out here somewhere that's a, a low frequency, but then you get average and high. And so you're looking at these ellipticals, and as they overlap, then it creates a, a more blob, alvea shape. But, uh, they all start out as concentric circles, basically.
That's essentially a frequency.
It is exactly a frequency chart right. When we look at that data.
And how much of this graffiti is, is really own, unoccupied, own, um, industrial building?
I'm, I was just to throw a number off the hip, I'd say probably eighty percent of it. We're having houses get hit now, ours, uh, a lot of personal property, we're seeing one in the past two months. And, uh, so they're done with DARE. I know one tip of car coming through mine was right off of, uh, right at Elwood Street, they hanged the whole hood of that car, circa thirteen. I knew where Pacifica, they spray paint that people's wood, finished, finished recently a house on one of my avenues, south of my.
When they start building personal property like that, is that just basically, uh, towards another gang member of another type?
I would say yes, normally, there are two of those instances, uh, here's your, it disappeared. And, uh, a couple of them were in a neighborhood that were one of the gang members.
And Fairchild Park's been hit a lot.
Yes, sir. Can we do anything about the lighting there?
Uh, we certainly can, but you know, a lot of it, Fairchild Park's been hit, uh, all of.
Bathroom primarily, leading to the street. Cause it's darker right there.
We can certainly get it light, but that's, yeah.
So that's, that's what we need to do, especially in this area. You know, we sort of control our, our destiny with cleaning it up as quickly as possible in the school system. We used to do it, as soon as we'd hear about it, we'd send a crew to clean it. You know, therefore, in the city, we can do the same. However, on private property is what is taking so long. And, you know, I don't blame some of the people that are on cleaning. And I think we've helped solve some of that problem, uh, due to, um, Phil Bowers and, um, with Sustainable Alliance and Gary Oakley, Oakley Paint. They're working on a combination of Gary providing some of the paint, and Phil's group will provide, that's what we were that day regarding. Um, they will provide the services back for the laborers, given, I'm looking after that facility.
So, so for us, it's equipment and, and issue, uh, city spending. So you see here, these are, at, at times, government spending money to fix the problem, even on private property. That's a conversation at, at your level, as to what we do with that. You know, you, we're educating you about the harm, and now the tough decisions come about, what's the right path to take to fix that? How do we, how do we stop the kids from being out there doing this? And then how do we get this stuff covered up once it happens? We have some resources, the gang county task force, city county task force. Um, you know, he said more people, absolutely more people. More people in the schools on the prevention side, more people on the streets at night, on the surveillance, apprehension, or addiction side. Um, those are all, all pieces of that. Um, we could look at, you know, the possibility of an ordinance that, that helps us to manage, um, those hangovers. Through either written permission or, um, uh, abatement process. That grants us permission with notice to go on and, and cover that graffiti up, knowing the, the harms of society. Then you balance that at, at some level and say, it's worth, um, intruding onto that, the side of that premise to cover it up within the legal parameters, uh, available here in North Carolina. And so then the question, do we pay for it, do they pay for it? And those are all questions that, you know, citizen input drives, and you're the elected officials, and, and you tell us what to do.
How many other cities in North Carolina have a fund set up to go on private property?
I don't know, but we can reach out through the, uh, some, uh, bill board stuff online and try to discover that. Um, what, what the, the frequency is that, that folks are doing that. Try to discover that.
I think we could help the ordinance, how, how we go about having the light to go on that private property.
Problem.
Yeah, sure.
And because now what's going to occur, I think, you said a couple pictures, what you go over and paint over it. Uh, often even have different colored paints on that building. So, uh, Charles, I don't know if you want to speak to that enough, I think that's something we really need to be conscious of.
Well, there are a number of ramifications, uh, regarding private property rights, plus, uh, the ability to tell corrections. It's probably a little easier than it may itself. We've been running the legislative issues, uh, actually, the judge didn't tell a lot of the collection. We could start to work on, um, now, to, to look at deeper. We could try to assemble various graffiti organizations around the state, which will help give a roof.
I personally would be interested in that, not necessarily to fund it, but I mean, it's such a fund to work on, but I wouldn't like to, to, to be for it. Cause we're not the only one having this problem, obviously.
For the basis of today's society, so regardless of the size of your community or the socioeconomic base, uh, you're gonna have some, some level of issue related to.
How about the technology? You were speaking earlier about some of that setup, and then you had to move it on. Is there any way possible, we need to purchase more of that technology, so we won't have to necessarily move as far as, like, it?
Absolutely. Um, I, one damn time I've had it past week, I've actually been looking at some.
Early, it's neck over.
I didn't even say it, my.
I didn't either, good thing.
Yeah, I've actually been looking at some systems, I wanted to present, Lieutenant Long can present, and stuff that I think could be helpful to try to combat this issue. Cause this, I mean, it's not, it's going to happen again. It's just, and it's just like you said, the faster we get it down, the least likely it's gonna happen.
Right.
There are, uh, a number of different levels of things that we can do. So there are, there are companies that are applied to analysis of these things, and there are programs in some communities where even the garbage trucking, uh, drivers are equipped with GPS enabled cameras, and the minute they see it, they take a picture, and it uploads. And then that creates the work order that, that, you know, encourages either the owner to paint it, or us to paint it, if it's on public property. Um, there are, uh, things that look like, uh, you know, uh, emergency lights that you can put up that, uh, sense motion and come on and give verbal warnings, go away. You're being video, those kinds of things that aren't connected interactively to the police department. And then there are versions that are connected interactively to the police department, uh, motion sensitive activated, uh, and, and you're just looking at how much are we willing to spend for, for what piece of technology? And then how many places do we have to put them, and, and at what cost? So, um, there are systems that, uh, property owners can purchase and put up as deterrent. And then there are some that the government can put up with permission of the property owner, or we can use public infrastructure, um, you know, Duke Power Bowl and put it on that and, and use that as a platform. Uh, with, with their permission to, uh, to do that. So, uh, all sorts of levels and scales of, of what we might look at. And, uh, I'm sensing some interest in, in pursuing that, so this was really just the field of to say, do we perceive a problem? And do we have some kind of green light for you to, to move ahead and, and bring back a greater level of information? And so, uh, we'll take some time, we'll do that, and come back, uh, loaded with more concrete answers as far as, uh, what the options are.
I'd also wish to see, if there are individual businesses in North Carolina that are using, uh, what a waste to have the kids sit over in detention. They could be coming over and, you know, they're not necessarily cleaning the mess, they might even put the next.
The next kid's mess, yeah, that's true.
You know, with the two, bro. First of all, we've had some kids come in and do some of that. We actually had kids come in, we, we, we really did a bathroom in Davidson Park a couple years ago, called two kids over there. But, but their parents didn't do that.
Right.
It wasn't, it's court system.
Who parent it helps?
Parent got them early. Presently, our ordinance specifies, so if, if this occurs on a private piece of property, then right now, except the owner.
We can do nothing other than encourage that at this point. You know, we would, we would send the gang guys over and explain the issues and, and why it's important societally to have that covered up. And we recognize the economic impact to them as a victim, and can't really offer them any shining light of restitution to, to recoup their expense. Um, and we look to them to be good citizens and, and choose to invest the money to, uh, to fix it on our behalf, is where we currently sit.
And Mayor, you may want to mention the, the situation with, uh, the group who, that's offered to be of some help to this, that's between them and the private property.
That's what I mentioned, the community, yeah.
You want to mention that group again?
Uh, the, uh, Phil Bowers with Sustainable Alliance.
Right.
Is the group that we met with.
Yes, sir.
The one over there off of, um, Queen Anne Street with the garden. His guy, he's got guys that come in and work for him, and they're willing to, uh, clean up, especially that area along Queen Anne. The picture you were showing, and Gary Oakley was over there painting paper, has to agree to give him some paint to be able to have his guys do the labor, so, um, coordination to the group.
Yeah, you know, and there's more models like that, you use a voice scout troop, something like that, or the Y, those groups of kids that are seeing this and, and want to come out and do the right thing, and, and not punitive.
This same area on, uh, Queen Anne has been painted by a church group before. So this would be the second time, two different groups have been on this, on this project. And that gets tagged a lot over there.
Well, what time of the day and night has that with the picture taken in broad daylight, when that went though?
That type of business is heavily wooded, at the backside, so that, I think, you know, they felt they were a little more secure there. The, uh, I'm just going to assume, that bit, they actually have a contract with Walmart, and they're doing socks in there, so it's open, typically, Monday through Friday. So I'm assuming that's long weekend, uh, on Saturday or something. They're doing it here in the day, primarily those, you know, at nighttime. Those are the those, it's issued for them.
They get schools, though. Schools are going, they're, they're only there in the daytime, and they're tagging the bathrooms and cafeteria and wherever, so, I mean, they're pretty brazen.
They were tagged, yeah, the last time I dealt with the school system, they tagged, uh, Queen Broadview and Cummings. Of that, uh, auditorium side, I mean, they, they hit it hard, and we ended up putting extra light over that area, and it seemed to, to help that. We didn't have another one, I don't know since two thousand eleven what's happening, but it stopped it pretty much there. And that was right, right there on the main street that went through there, uh, from Broadview to Cummings too, on that side of the bank, um, and the, and the bank, so the, uh, auditorium. And if the stadium used to get hit up there all the time.
So, a little bit of circumplanning out of that stuff.
So, is it, what we hear is, you want the chief to go back and look at some of the options, uh, potentially us to look at some ordinances other people are, are implementing. Uh, the technology, the concept. And, uh, and just come back to you all, look at this information, is that what I'm hearing? Everybody, look, look, the juvenile justice system is, is serious about this, you know?
Agreed.
And, and he's just into, he's, he's, oh, the reason I asked about what time this happened, you know, you pitch right back to the, we're the parents. What, what time of the day and night, what is this happening, it's happening at, you know, one, two in the morning?
Parents cannot control these kids who are involved in this, and he's already stated that, it's pretty obvious. I mean, each, the same kids have problems with it in school as well. They don't want to be there, uh, they'd much rather be doing stuff like this, and so the parents, in some cases, the parents are scared of the kids.
And then, and that won't fit with BDS that we, that's how we had previously validated, and they were actually threatening to say that.
Yeah.
The group were.
I can't tell you, the parents I've had in, in my years, they'd walk into your office and say, man, what are you doing? I mean, we're afraid that the child's gonna strike us. So, if there's a problem, that's, that's a society rule, you know? And if we can do nothing, or if we can attempt to try to improve it, so.
I think it goes back to the justice system. They're, I think they're fault, cause I mean, you're probably, he is right, so grown up, rational, back in, and when I was a kid, they had convicts out on the streets, cleaning the streets up. They're cutting trees down, you know? They didn't want to be out there, just once they got there, somebody saw them and go, you know, they were, duck, just carry on. But you put a kid out there, you let a kid go out there and do that stuff, you know? Now they put them, like, you know, they had guys, somebody go pick up balls of trash or whatever, all that other stuff is. So the judicial system was just feeding the system up a little bit, and say, okay, well, this is your part of your punishment, just get out there and do that, clean it up. I think that's a deterrent to it, but until we can make that happen, without violating everybody's rights.
Yeah, that's the problem.
One, one option too, is some of the people who, that gray or less hair here remembers this. The community service program used to be, with the, uh, prison system, uh, was a system that was, was a, a manpower service. That this city literally got thousands of hours of use from, from minimal security prisons. During the budget cuts of the previous administration, that service was cut out in the state because it was, and we wrote letters. If you got the memory, the council endorsement wrote a letter to the governor begging them. We offered, if we could work out. I tried, didn't want, tried supervision, that's what it was about. Well, we offered, they, they would, we would, we would take a vehicle to the area to pick the people up, because you were getting, gosh, ten to fifteen people for six or seven hours a day. I mean, they could clean parks, I mean, literally here, if you got people, the people in the buildings, uh, that would be your, your, your labor force that could take care of awful lot of, of, of the work here. Well, that's an option, ever coming back again, I, I, I still think some of the, to contact the state, the governor's office about, Everlud. And we, we lost a ton of labor in that program one way.
Good, I'm chief.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, uh, some time now, we've talked about potential reorganization that I planned in zoning commission. Uh, it's, it's been, uh, it's an issue that has, uh, becomes a little issue in terms of, of having enough people at our meetings and then voting. And it's, it's just, uh, it's something that, one of our labor sessions a few months ago, they asked us to, to talk to some other communities of, of similar size and what they're doing. So, any for that?
Well, um, we rearranged the, the BOA with your blessing, and it's worked out very well. Well, um, we rearranged the, the VOA with your blessing and it's worked out very well.
And VOA is?
The Board Adjustment. At the September meeting, there were three members absent. And by having to alternate members, um, we were able to have, uh, not just a quorum, but a full board. So that, that worked out very well and it wouldn't have happened the way it was structured before. Um, we want to do something similar with, uh, E and Z. And we want to essentially reduce their numbers from twelve to seven. And that would set in regular members, five for the city and two for the ETJ. Again, following the same kind of representation as with the, the VOA, be about ten thousand, um, member, ten thousand citizens represented per, um, city member and five thousand for the ETJ, just as we set it with the, the VOA. Uh, we would also have two alternates for the city members and two alternates for the, uh, ETJ member. So that way we're almost certain to have a full board. We also want to have them be able to hear, uh, all cases. As it is now, if you're ETJ, you're going to hear ETJ cases. And we have our planning board chair here. So the board did by majority approve of the, the idea and, um, Richard Parker will be happy and I'm sure to, to talk to you about.
Who else does this cross today?
Um, most.
Size ourselves.
Lot of, uh, communities. We pulled up, let's see, twenty-four towns, um, is what we, we surveyed or Jody Lee, our, um, administrator surveyed. The largest was, uh, the largest number of members was ten and the smallest was six. The average came out to just over seven members.
What was the size of the city?
They were around our size.
They're twenty-four?
Yeah, he doesn't have their, um, he doesn't have their numbers on here. Some are smaller, some are larger. Um, he's even got, uh, Wilmington's on here, Shiloh, Shiloh's, uh, much smaller, Wilmington's much larger. Um, Pittsboro, I'd say Gibsonville, Greensboro, Concord, Kannapolis, Cary, Meven. Those are a few.
What problems do they have?
Issues with having enough members present at a meeting to be able to conduct the business at the end. There've been two cases this year and I think there, there was one that was, I believe, just before I was hired last year that I'm aware of. There, there may have been.
So you resigned your fire station last October?
Yes, our station was held up for that very reason.
And the ETJ members will be able to vote too?
Oh, of course, everything.
Because I think that was, I served on the, on the board for a good while. And that was a problem and I wouldn't have a forum.
Right.
I didn't like this idea of having, having enough people there to vote.
Right.
ETJ is sometimes very short, we're not getting on the agenda, they wouldn't show up. I'm sure.
So if you have a, you have a vote that way and, uh, say you have seven members and two ETJ, but actually nobody from the ET, ETJ shows up, neither the two original people nor the alternative. But you still have a forum enough with, on, you still drive on.
You can still, you can still have your representation enough of a forum together. That's what happened with the VOA. They had enough with their alternate members to be able to go ahead and go. But we could bring this, get this written up and bring it back to you, your first meeting.
And one of the things we heard from E and Z members, like Seelo said, if, if that way it is now, the ETJ only vote on ETJ, if there was no item on the agenda, that they, a lot of them, they didn't know I came.
This, this is more fair because they all get to vote on everything.
Regent, what did you say? Well, the biggest problem we had, Mr. Mayor, is we've had two, uh, two cases this year in which a forum was not, uh, available. Had one private developer who drove all the way in from, uh, Guilford County to present his, his rezoning request. And we sent him away in because we didn't have a forum. Uh, then the next, uh, couple of meetings after that, uh, we didn't have a forum to approve our minutes of, of the meeting that we had with the big, uh, the big University Drive, uh, discussion that we had with, uh, the, the, the folks in the Hutton Lane neighborhood. So we couldn't approve our minutes when we didn't have a forum. And then we couldn't hear the, uh, the fire station, uh, request because we didn't have a forum. We were missing just one person, uh, I think, on that one, let me be able to just one. We were missing just one person in the ETJ. See, we're short ETJ already. You're supposed to have six and we only have five. And so we didn't have enough members that night to, uh, to be able to vote on the fire station. So that was held up. So, and then, and then their administrators, they just desperately called us to make sure we're going to be there, be there, be there so we can approve our minutes and have a vote. So, I, we, we've agreed that we like this, uh, Board of Adjustment model. We would, uh, like to see that with E and Z.
She's all leaving and stuff, but the problem.
It is, yeah, you only have to have the three members of Board of State that you, you can vote as many as you like.
You have my choice. Does that need to be on, uh, the simple?
What council action would you take?
Uh, this was bad, we have a public hearing because it was a change and they want, um, planning about to bring this back, uh, I proposed orders to stop and, uh, we'd like to have ETJ to be, uh, observation, bring it here, all going on, but I'll take about six today.
I could probably write to you if you're, if you're ever voting for us one day.
You guys, okay, let's start that process. Honestly, with E and Z runs a couple of times, they've been pretty embarrassed when people come in and hate in their business.
Did you ever provide better customer service for the?
Yeah, I'm glad you had me on, you should, unfortunately, I didn't have.
Okay, uh, obviously, two additional, uh, community meetings this Thursday at, uh, Tarrantine and following Thursday at the Denova Center. Carousel Festival this weekend. Hope the weather holds up. Uh, and, um, with that, opened up any comments or not? We've seen moves north on it.
I've, I've got a new chair I'd like to ask this body to address in September time. Okay. I, I sent, uh, a member of the council, you know, a request to, to set a public hearing to sort of increase the size of it beyond five and seven members. And I've heard back from all of you and I think the problem is the consensus is to have the hearing. Uh, I want to proceed to that. I, I've asked to be put on the agenda instead of saying, uh, this, and, and for, for the record, so to speak. It wasn't like I just brought it up, you know, like you, uh, I presented it, you know, back in January of this year. And then again, I brought the issue up again, regulations, tree. And, um, and to be honest, I've heard a lot of comments from my citizens with that, you know, to take a look at this issue. I, I think it's, uh, it's an important issue and I would ask it to be put back on the agenda and, uh, and we started that up here. But I, uh, I know, uh, council member David Hutton, he did a legally abuse and also potentially to some of the, um, grand cases with respect to the proceedings. Uh, I, I'd love to hear feedback from you, you three. Well, you know, I'll start it off by simply saying that I, I, I responded to your email and my response was, uh, what I said in my mind was that would, um, that I wanted to wait until the new council was seated. And that can be as early as last meeting in December or it could be the first meeting in January. But that's, that's where I stand.
I've been asking the same questions, you know, but, uh, again, you know, I, I think there's some clarification on, should attorney, what, you know, if we do, we do this way, process, we have total wards or precincts or whatever is set up on that? And how would they be, will they be at, at large candidates or, I mean, would have candidates at large in some, with certain areas, just?
The way I read your memo is, is that you're not really proposing any particular change as in just an opportunity for people to come and address whether, you know, but when, of course, when you get into the issue of changing the composition of the elected board, then you're obviously going to look into the, you're going to be looking into those issues of, okay, if you're going to expand it, expand it from what numbers? From five to seven to nine or whatever it is? And when you do so, are you going to go with a district system, a straight district system? The statute of numbers, one sixty-eight, one oh-one, one oh-one through one eleven is what it is. And one oh-two addresses the, so, so the procedure involved. And, uh, it looks as if, uh, it's not necess, necessary that the board can do it. Uh, it can be, it can be instigated basically under one oh-three by the community, uh, the petition process. But the board itself can do it and doesn't necessarily have to put it to a vote of the, the public. I think everybody I've talked to so far has basically felt like, and I, I, I sense it, you probably feel the same way, that if we're going to go explore this, at some point in time, we may want to turn around and present it a particular option to the public. And if you're going to do that, that's why I followed up with a couple of telephone calls to, to, uh, the local election board and to the state board, fell by the name of, uh, Don Riley down there.
When you say expansion or, excuse me, when you say options?
Options.
Are you talking about the system? Are you talking about the expansion?
If you read one oh-one, it talks in terms, there are about five different options of competition that, that the state legislature gives local governments an option. And one of those would be straight all-warden system, straight elected at large as we are now. Uh, minimum of five members, uh, and then a combination. And then there's also the issue of parts and elections versus non-parts and elections. Which is, is, is going to get thrown in. So if we're going to, if we're going to venture down that path, but I think and I sense that your comments, they're not necessarily to present something for people to come and comment and respond to, the board, just the idea of, of expanding the board from five members to seven and all, of course, all those other things would be on the table.
Well, that's true. And like I said, I, I indicated this back in January and brought it up again in April. You know, if, uh, I'd like to move on to it. I think talking more on, like, you say, if you want to say it's been, been recent, you know, after the newborn is, is impacted.
My, my company, and I'm going to say, here I, my company was fine if you, if we could do it. But I don't think we ought to do it before the election because we'll be accused of either, or perceived as trying to preempt the next board. And, and, and whoever they, whatever they might, to where that competition with board is at that point in time.
Well, it, it, let me just make one point about the county, the bottom line is that I would hopefully some of the individuals you had for could have been invited. Matter of fact, I requested that, haven't been invited. But I would like to keep it on the agenda and if you want to say the second meeting in December time, there, that's after the election. I mean, it gets you, uh, council bosses beyond, you know, what you're requesting. But I, I'd like to have, you know, I, I mean, this is a real important issue to me and, and some of the people I talk to. And I think, I think we owe it to the citizens, like Francis, to get some input. And that's all I'm asking, we're not even part of the vote.
That was good, I think, at this time, maybe you want to do it in December or? I, I know what happens every December, the second meeting every December basically is down, getting toward downtime for, you want to do it in January?
Uh, I, I guess, uh, I guess the question here for, like Francis, is one of, uh, you know, how would we, how would we be, let's say for Dan, but if you, if you change it and you make it subject to a referendum, I mean, like you were saying, Lee, I bet you have, you can vote on it, it has to be either a primary or general election.
If it, if it meant that.
It cannot be a special election. So, I don't know how time we have, there are certain timeframes, but we need to spell out and provide a discount for all of you who don't.
Well, my, my, my thinking on that would be this, if we were going to go down that route, you're talking about a, uh, just a general, open, public hearing with nothing really presented.
Just people. I suppose, say, what it is, is, is I'd like to hear from people because I've heard, you know, and I, I think we owe it to the citizens and to the people I talk to. You know, we talk public hearing and things all the time, you know, and why not?
And then, in my mind, trying to put this in on a time frame.
Yeah.
In my mind, if we did that in either December, first part of January, followed up with it was something specific, uh, if the, if the council at that time chose to put something on the table, something specific.
If the council acted to move forward, then you could put a specific proposal together to either this council could adopt it, you know, amend the charter, or they could make it, you make a proposal and make it subject to referendum.
Revert, yeah. May, May the sixth would be the earliest, I think, is the date, maybe four, May the sixth.
So if the statute that are enough time, if you go to January, you know, that's fine. You know, and that'd get the mayor and the council boss beyond the election funding. So I'd like to put it on there and move forward, you know, because I, I don't get asked daily. I'm not even exaggerating, but I said, please find a time to, to, to center attention. But, and I will say, the research that I did, there's only one city in our population range, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, that only has five councilmen. All the others have seven or more. I guess the question I would ask to you about that is, you, what is not working right now with our council? Or is it just one expansion? I, 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 you know, I don't think it's so much what's not working is that I hear from guys down there, you know, certain people are not represented and I'm not, and I'm not suggesting award system or anything. But it's clear to me, I think, I think logic would conclude that the more people you have on the council, the more constituents you're going to have, there's going to be more representation. So, what I'm saying, okay, let's say, and it's not a question of, if it ain't broke, you know, it's going to be fixed. It's just, you know, the people I talk to, they don't like, it would be, it would be better to have them move. And then I got to look at it and I did the research and said it's our size, having five. Well, I, I think two things come out of that, it boils down, and you said, you said there were five options that were just, or four or five, whatever. I think you really, it boils down to two options. One would be an expansion of the same one you have today, that's what you're going to get tomorrow or you go to a whole system. And I think that's the two issues that we're going to have to debate among this council. If you want what you just said, representation, make sure you give fair representation throughout this entire city, then it's going to have to be a whole system. Well, you know, uh, I'm, I'm not proposing a whole system. Well, if you're, okay, I'm sorry. Again, yeah. And I didn't say, you know, and that's why I said fair representation, I said war ring today. And, and I think certainly, you know, this is moving the law kind of field. If you criticize or want to, some of these may be inclined, you know, for at large. You may be inclined with a district. I've heard, I've heard a lot of feedback about the district system, there's more devices than at large, okay? That would kind of. That, that can be easily researched there. Yeah, well, then, and the deal is that I kind of like to open a dialogue, debate, if you will, you know, to address the issue. I mean, I don't want to dodge the, in other words, let's go ahead and debate it. And then, you know, we could say, you don't like the proposal, okay? And then if people that are interested in it, you know, could, I mean, they could petition for representation.
Under, uh, one sixty-eight, one oh-three.
And actually, one of the choices, one of those two. So what you're saying, what you're saying to nod is that you want to sit back on the agenda so we can set a public hearing for, let's say, the first meeting in January, is that what you're saying? Yeah, and you get done input, not, not so. All right, let me ask you this, what happens if we, when the new council was seated, whether it be the three we have or different people on December eighth or whatever that first meeting is, that we set the public hearing for the first week?
Whether it be the three we have or different people on December eighth or whatever that, that first meeting is, that we set the public hearing for the first week of January? Do you have to have X amount of days in between the public hearing?
I don't think that requires public hearing.
So if we have the first meeting that night, the new council is seated, one of the first items on the agenda would be to set a public hearing for the first meeting in January, second meeting in January, is that right? Can we do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are you all right with that?
I, I, what I'd like to do is go ahead and set the public hearing.
So I don't want to do that until after, after period.
Okay, well, I would ask that be put on the agenda tomorrow night and just vote my proposal down, okay?
What do you want to do, sir?
You want to put it on and vote it down?
Well, I, I'll tell you what I want to do.
Okay? Tell us.
All right, I'll tell you, wait, wait. If we look at making changes like this, okay, let's look at making changes overall, okay? Now, I propose that we give the mayor four years instead of two, instead of running there two terms. I'm, I'm sorry, this may not include you. But, uh, but that's not really, you look at that in this power, because they have four-year mayors.
So is there all sorts, that, that's, I think your point probably is that there are all sorts of options.
Yeah.
I think what Bob's getting around to is that he's not proposing anything in specific.
Right.
He's just, and that would, that would be that dialogue, but he would also have an opportunity for the public to come and talk about it, not just among the four or five.
The question on the table is, Mr. Ward wants to have it tomorrow night to, on the agenda to set the public hearing?
If we add the four years to the mayor.
That's another question.
If we want, that was my proposal, if we want, if we add the compensation on there about four years, he lets the mayor.
What, what he?
I'm not.
I, I, I hear what you're saying and I hear what you're saying, but I, I don't think that's Bob's, I don't think that's Bob's idea.
And I'm certainly be willing to look at that. I just want to start the dialogue and bring you in. And to mayor, get back to your point, the one, let's say, you, you have a newly constituted board, whatever there are, you can add two between now and then. If you have the same current board, you can vote for not have the public hearing and then the people that are interested in it are relegated to the referendum, you know, a vote of approval again.
So that, I mean, it's.
What I'm saying is, is that if the new board comes in, it's like, they understand you call a public hearing. We don't like that idea. We don't want to send that action to the.
All right, well, that's, what, what would be the difference in us, difference in us setting it tonight or tomorrow night and the new, new council coming in, so we don't want to do that?
Well, I, I don't know, except for the fact, you know, I asked back in January.
There's no doubt you did do that. We understand.
And then in April, I asked again, sure, you know, okay, we get to January, okay, you know, the, the, the people that I talk to and I listen to that are interested. I might, you know, if you go ahead and set the hearing, you know, there's something to shoot for, work with, you gotta go. I mean, you, you know when the dialogue is gonna be up.
All right. Silas, what's the answer to your question, Bob's question? Yes or no?
Yes, fine.
Huh?
Fine.
Okay.
Well, I have no problem at all with, with discussing, but I don't, what I see happening is, is that once we have that hearing, then it becomes the vote of the board, whether, as it's constituted then, whether or not to go forward or not. What needs were changed for?
If they want to make a protest, may not even want to make a protest.
May not make a protest.
They say, well, you know, we don't like that idea at all.
My only question to you is, do you want to do it the last, the last meeting in December? You wouldn't want to do it the same night that everybody?
I, I don't have a problem, David, moving it to the part media in, in January.
He just wants to get it on the agenda.
Right, right.
It's a simple question.
The three, yeah, pass real simple.
Yeah.
Three days, December seventeenth, January seventh, January twenty-first, council will be seated December third.
Well, I really, I'm, I'm moved.
Yeah, he's, uh, the question is just very simple. Do you want to put on the agenda tomorrow night?
Yeah, I would ask for you to put it on the agenda. I mean, you know, I'm, I'm ready on that. Say, let's wait for the new board. I'm trying to, I'm waiting, but, put it on, you know, set the public hearing.
Put it on and set the public hearing, thank you for that.
I, I find putting it on for the first meeting in January.
All right, fine.
I, the, the reason I said first meeting in January is because I, it seems to me that every December it rolls around, there's too much activity going on here.
Uh, what was your opinion, James, personally?
I think January's set.
Okay, so January's seven, is that what I heard?
Seven.
Seven?
That's correct, is that, I'll do my computer.
All right, anything else, guys? Anything else? Can they answer?
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, thanks, guys.